It is July 16th, as Planning Commission meeting. If I'd like to call the order. And if everybody could stand and let's see if Tony will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the five United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate from injustice for all.
And Tony's music.
Was that you this time, Tony?
It's a different rendition of National Anthem, I guess. All right, if we could have roll call, please.
Chair Phillips.
Here.
Vice Chair Miller. Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner McHouston.
Here.
Commissioner Milde.
Here.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Here.
And absent from tonight's meeting is Commissioner Mullins. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. And the first thing we'd like to do is approve the Planning Commission minutes for June 18th. I was not here, so. We have some, we've got it moved in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So passed. All right, let's move on to number two, which is Brosch Architects on behalf of the Moss family.
Just as a point of order, we have no public comments on items that are not on the agenda. We kind of skipped over that. And then on the consent agenda is, is the Brosch Architects, but we can certainly do a presentation too. So if the commission would like that to have a presentation, we can do that. Or if the architectural review looks acceptable. But we do also want to note for the agenda that it references on behalf of the Moss family, that should be corrected to the Patterson Riverside Apartment LLC is the current owner of that project.
Anybody have any objections?
I had a question. I was here when it came through before and, but it looks like it's changed quite a bit from the original layout. Multiple buildings now instead of single building. And the parking's completely different. The roadways are completely different.
That's correct. So that is why they brought the new architectural review to the Planning Commission for their review. If there were comments on that or you guys wanted the presentation, we could definitely go into that and do a little bit more of a deep dive. But if the, the question is just on the new configuration, the general plan amendment for this project moved it into the RM 24 land use district, which is, as you may know, reviewed with a staff level review. So if that, that project came through tomorrow and it was just the RM 24 zoning with no underlying land use compliance review, that would just be a staff level review. So what we're here today for is just to update the architectural. So I don't mind doing the presentation if you guys want to discuss more. If that didn't answer your question.
So under the existing city code, it's an RM, is just a staff review?
The RM 24.
RM 24. Okay.
Anybody else?
I guess the question is, because your question, and do you want them to do a presentation? We have a new commission here. And if you can do a brief presentation so they, they're familiar with what, what was approved. I think that would be helpful for especially all the newer commissioners, including myself.
All right, yeah, thank you Chair and Vice Chair Miller. I'll do a brief presentation, try to keep it pretty high level. Today, we are reviewing item number two, which is the architectural review for the updated design of the previously approved apartment project, case number 21-191. The revised proposal modifies the original layout, which featured a large, a single building to include five separate residential buildings in the clubhouse. Additionally, the updated, updated design increases the total number of residential units by five. The applicant today is Brosch Architects on behalf, it does reference the Moss family on both the site plan and the presentation tonight. But we were under the impression that the sale had not gone through yet. It has gone through and so the correct owner should be Patterson Riverside Apartments LLC. So just as a point of clarity. A little bit of background on the project, as Tony, as Commissioner Hicks had noted, was this went to our Planning Commission previously. It was the approval of a 5.12 acre property at the intersection of 14th Street and Yucapá Boulevard, including a general plan amendment for the change in land use district from RM 10M to the RM 24 high density land use district. The proposal included an LUCR to develop a three-story, 144-unit housing project with architectural review and a density bonus request. The project was approved by the City Council at their regular meeting of November 11th, 2023. The project design, during the preparation of engineering plans revisions were required as the topography previously provided were inaccurate. The original proposal included one L-shaped building that consisted of 144 units with a revised layout consisting of five building and 149 units. The project consists of updated architectural packet and site plan for the Planning Commission's review with the redesign in keeping with the previous architectural style and general layout. It maintains the same amenities and landscaping palette, but in a different configuration with the original conditions of approval still applying, although with the amended unit count. The DBA does still need to also be recorded, so that will need to go back to the City Council, but that is a procedural action. So here we have the prior elevation design did lean into kind of a modern craftsman look with a mixture of wooden accent material, some stacked stone and gables prominently displayed. Here's the proposed redesign that, that really was built off of that, that same kind of design, although kind of split into the five different buildings. Still kind of relying on accent wooden, wooden accents as well as stacked stone and gables. And then again, the five different units. The proposed floor plans are shown here. There's, we, the, the site references two-bedroom, one office per our development code. Anything that could be used as a bedroom, pretty much we look at as a bedroom. So we're calling that a three-bedroom from the city's review standpoint. But for, for the applicant's purposes, they're, they're calling out two bedrooms and an office. And then there's a, a one-bedroom as well. Here are the proposed kind of colors and materials. Really not super user-friendly there, but that's a high level of what's been proposed for the modifications. If you guys have any questions or comments on the presentation, I'd be happy to address them. The applicant's representative is also here. If you guys wanted to ask them any questions.
Commissioners?
I have a question here because I wasn't involved in this when it was originally proposed. On, because this is a three-story building and there's patio or balconies area in there, what kind of conditions have been placed on this for items that can be placed on the balcony? Or is there any conditions?
There are no conditions specific to what could be placed on the balcony.
Okay, so somebody could hang their laundry?
Yeah.
Okay, just stack things up as, to the ceiling of the balcony?
That's correct.
So there is no, there is no conditions to that. I guess I'm going to want to talk to the applicant. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
Just to comment on one of, on the architectural side, since it's architectural review, the, it's pretty much flat, three-story building with no, no real detail to it other than the, well, the one that faces Yucapá Boulevard. You really can't see it from, well, you can from that view from the sides, but you don't have any, any build-out whatsoever on, on these structures. So you've got a little bit of rock and a little bit of wood added to it, but for the most part, it's just a three-story flat structure where most of the apartments we've seen have a little more of a recess detail on them so that you don't have that box. Because you get a little bit out of the wood and rock, but you know, you're talking about four inches, three or four inches on a, on a rock or a wood detail. My observation.
Any other commissioners? All right, would the applicant like to come up?
Yes, my name is Jim Broski, Broski Architects. As far as your question about the two-dimensional flat plane that it is, the front elevation, which is the lower one here, has about 10 feet of difference between the back walls and the floor walls. So there's, there's stairs, towers that come out and project. So there's, there's at least 10, almost maybe 15 feet of relief in the three planes as far as, as it stacks back. So there's plenty of relief on that. We've also created on the, on the backside, we've created some depth of at least two to three feet that give you that with those pairs of columns that are, that are projecting out from it. And then the gables roofs come out. So we've tried to address that planer look by giving you some relief to it.
Well, the relief that's on the interior though is only seen from inside the project where.
That's the primary one, but, but yeah.
And so.
The backside, again, the north, the north elevation of Building E has it too. So the, the three elements that are there project about four feet. They give it some relief.
Four feet? Yeah, just, just on the, on the elevations of the buildings themselves, it doesn't look like it's four feet, but.
The, the, the site plan and the floor plan have it represented that way.
Do they?
So we, we presented several, well, every building has a floor plan that we presented to the city as the package. And if you check the, you know, and look at the detail on there, you'll see that relief in there.
Okay, yeah. I just didn't see much relief on the.
It's, it's hard to see from a two-dimensional thing.
Well, definitely here, but on the.
Correct.
On the site plan itself. So that was my question on it is, it's a, it's a big three-story box without a lot of relief.
The other one was a long, 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 long building that had no relief either.
It was.
And it had corridors that were 200, 300 feet long.
Yeah.
This breaking it into, to these. And also the, the site slopes 12 feet from one corner to the other corner. So these buildings are staggered at different heights, whereas the other building on the previous scheme was one level over the entire site with, had to be 12-foot retaining walls to, to correct for the, so the site slope because it was one floor level over the entire complex. And that really doesn't work.
No, and I, I think it's a much better plan. I, I appreciate the, the access all the way around all of the structures instead of that hammerhead turn in the back of what, a thousand foot of.
And that was the purpose, is a fire lane around it. And then also for the users, so they can either choose this way or choose the other direction. So it works well and it's a nice evolution of what was handed to us.
And I, my only concern is what's seen from Yucapá Boulevard and 14th Street. So, and, and those elevations are, they are a little flatter than.
Yeah.
You know, that one end, the end of the one building, it's just that box.
The site is removed from Yucapá visually and physically by an empty lot that will stay empty. So whenever somebody puts anything on that lot, you won't see our, our complex inside the domain. So whether it's a temporary visible vantage point of anything from this, it's, it is going to be temporary. And I don't know whether at that range, 600 feet or whatever that distance is, you will notice whether it's two-dimensional or three-dimensional.
Well, thank you.
But we did try to shift the floor plan a little and then we gave projections and we gave some cable ends to it.
Uh huh. Yeah, on the inside, I think it's, it's fine. It's just on the exterior what's, everyone else sees.
Anyone else?
I, I don't want me to repeat my question again that I had. Has there been any provisions made for what can be stored out on the patio decks and?
The, my client has, has numerous apartment complexes that he rents out and leases to different people and things. So he's a landlord that has conscientious plans for the thing. As far as an imposition or a statement that this can, you know, have, have that circumstances where they limit it, I don't think he'd have a problem if somebody wants to add that verbiage to it. But that's usually a CCNR or something of that nature, legal thing, as opposed to a planning commission review.
Okay, well, we're talking architectural and because this is three stories and it can't, and Building A can be seen from 14th Street or neighboring properties because realize all the other buildings face one another. I would like to see staff maybe look at this in the future and maybe we could look, address that because now that we're starting to allow three-story buildings, over time, ownerships can change and some of these could become unsightly in the future. And we want to make sure that architecturally, aesthetically, that it is going to be well-maintained and we don't have those issues later and say, wow, I wish we would have addressed that, you know, 20 years ago.
Have you had a chance to look at the floor plans of the buildings?
Yes.
Because the, the, there's stair towers at the two ends which block four patios. There's a balcony and a projection that blocks other ones. So theoretically, the, the vantage point of your balconies is going to be pretty much just concealed behind all the ins and outs that we've created for it. So the building A, which is the closest to 14th Street, it will have a frontage that pretty much will be visible from the north side of 14th Street. As you're coming south on 14th, you will see the frontage of Building A, which will have, that's the attractive side that you're going to be looking at. And it has ins and outs and ups and downs and concealment that you won't see those balconies.
Yeah, I, I realize that. What you've stated there, it's very limited view. I'm more concerned about the property owner that is just north of Building A that could be seen, a third-story unit with something that could be unsightly up there. And I'm only looking at if we're going to start approving three-story buildings and apartments and that, that we need to, I think, address those issues. So I'm not trying to rebuild this here tonight, but I'd like, like this to be noted so in the future that that could be addressed.
Excellent, I appreciate that also.
Yeah, I think to, to that point, we'll, as we did have the crime prevention kind of multifamily standards, but with some of the changes with federal law and how the Sheriff's Department has changed our approach, it may be worth revisiting some of the standards that we have just for property maintenance purposes for all multifamily projects. So three stories or I think probably the consensus would be that the sightliness of any multifamily project would probably be worthwhile to make sure that those maintenance codes are in place so that be a three-story project or anything else that people aren't storing stuff that creates unsightly appearance for, for neighborhoods. And so we'll, we'll take a look into that and make sure that there's adjustments made to the municipal code as appropriate.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Questions? All right, do we have any public comment? Thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
No public comment on this item.
All right, with that, the public hearing is closed and up for discussion. Start on the end over here.
I'm fine, all my questions are answered.
All right, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve PLN-ARC-25-0001.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to case number PLN-PDE 250002, open the public hearing.
Okay, so this will be ordinance number 450. I did want to take just a brief pause back on the prior item to Vice Chair Miller's point. There is a provision in the multifamily design standards for the, the RM 24 that does prohibit the, the storage of materials in the open and stuff. So there is actually code provisions for people storing in like the laundering stuff in the code already.
Okay, there, there's provision provided, then, then who monitors that?
It would be through code enforcement.
Through code enforcement?
Yeah.
So a member of the public could call code enforcement and that would be addressed in a typical timeframe through code enforcement? Is it spelled out what, because it could become, my fear is, is whether it could be come out and somebody says, well, so I got four or five chairs and I stack them there. And then the next thing, I got towels on the handrail or I'm going to dry my sheets for a month. So that's concerns. So I'm, I'm glad there's something there. The test of time will show us whether or not how enforceable that is and what it can be. So, thank you.
Well, that can also parlay into tonight's item, ordinance number 450. I'm not going to go through a comprehensive presentation since this is continued from the prior meeting of, of June 18th. But this is ordinance kind of covering a variety of different subjects of the city's development code. And so it does include provisions that is to address a number of kind of smaller items that's in the, the code that, that need to be updated. Kind of before we finish our comprehensive development code update, we are working on that process right now. But really, the, the updated code sections fall under a variety of different topics. One is either to ensure compliance with changes in state law, either to implement housing element programs that are identified in our housing element that we need to accomplish, implementing economic development program and fiscal sustainability goals established by City Council, enhancing public safety elements. So identifying issues that have either been identified through law enforcement or through the community at large or through council and getting those kind of addressed. Or as kind of cleanup items, either just general cleanup and tax code amendments or reflecting kind of law-instanding internal procedure and processes as part of it. So it does include a number of different topics. And so I do recognize that it covers a wide gamut of things. And so the commission may consider as part of the recommendation, you know, you know, one, all part of these different sections. And so I'm happy to answer kind of any questions on these different sections. They're broken down into sections to kind of help break up the topics and also reference out the individual codes. I do have that pulled up and happy to go into the council's discussion. If there's any items that council would like to flag for council, the commission would like to flag for councils, you know, additional deliberation or say, hey, we don't think this is maybe the, the right code to have in, so we recommend this be pulled out. Or in the case of anything, the commission can do that and be part of a recommendation for City Council and that will be presented for their ultimate decision. And so council is ultimate deciding factor in these code amendments. And so all your guys' input will be part of their, their deliberation as they take final action. And so that kind of concludes my presentation.
All right, does any commissioners have any questions? First half? I have one question. So with the uprise of residential assisted care facilities, that is going to be a rise here in the state of California as it is amongst many states in, around the country. My question is, will this, is there special zoning for that currently for residential care facilities? Because it's my understanding that the state can strong-arm a city if somebody wanted to open a private residential care facility. So is there current, maybe that's more of a question for the attorney, I don't know. Would this coincide with that or?
So residential care facilities are pursuant to federal law, considered as a residential use. So they kind of fall under that guise and so they're allowed in any residential district. One of the sections has reference in this code amendment adds some clarity to a specific type of residential care facility. And so this was brought up on kind of a specific request. And so since it has some unique carve-outs in terms of the building code and some references to it, is we're just adding some additional specificity related to that particular type of, of kind of qualifying use. But the residential care facilities on a broader brush kind of discussion is, is allowed in any residential district. And so they kind of fall within those, those parameters and then they're licensed by different state, different state agencies depending on what type of care that they're providing to, to individuals.
Okay, because I know anything nine and under qualifies for residential care. So would this fall under that same criteria?
There is a kind of a standard residential care beds is sit-in under is considered as a single-family home for zoning purposes. And then those that are larger fall under kind of a large residential care facility. And then the, the one that's referenced in the code here is kind of a slightly different one since this one is rather than individuals that may be provided, you know, like therapy and other types of disabilities. This one is a bit more, whereas those that are terminally ill. And so the level of engagement that happens at the facility is also quite a bit different. And so the permitting under the building code is also treated a little bit different as well, which is hence the, the clarifying components to it.
Okay.
I have, Ben on, on this one in particular. Are we prevented from having a CUP requirement for these facilities?
There is, for undersits, we won't be able to have that just because similar to, I think, residential or for zoning purposes, we don't require CUP for a single-family house. But there could be a CUP requirement for those that are larger than sits, is my understanding.
Okay, so you know, Ben and I spoke about this a little bit last week. But you know, one of my concerns is if anyone, if it's a leased property and someone passes away in the house by, if you sell that house and anyone's died in it and within three years, you have to disclose that. The only exception is if they died from AIDS. So I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, with residential care facilities, if you have a four-bedroom house that's say in Chapman Heights and you want to open a facility there, you could house up to eight individuals. And I have a personal friend who has been on hospice for over five years and has been back to the hospital multiple times. So my only concern with these is, you know, what purview do we have, if any? And if, if you have one next door to you in Chapman Heights and it's generating calls, service calls for ambulance or fire, how does, is there, is there any way to license these things within the city where there can be some setback or offset for those services?
I think for some of those questions, I'll defer to the city attorney on kind of what flexibility agencies have on, on that type of, on that metric.
Some of the flexibility, well, the general thrust is the city cannot treat these facilities any different from residential homes in the, in the same zoning. So if those setback requirements don't exist for single-family homes, then we can't really apply them either.
That answers my question.
Yeah, I'm not going to argue with the law, but from common sense, it seems to me, my wife ran a residential care home for about five years. There was just some concerns, I think, with location. It was in a cul-de-sac. There was not too much disruption with surrounding homes. Chapman Heights, that location, a little more impacted with homes, you know, five or 10-foot, you know, lot line separations or whatever, more impacted. Staffing that goes on in these care homes, I don't know if that's something that's beyond Planning Commission, but obviously the licensing of the people that.
planning commission, but obviously the licensing of the people that are working the facility and the kind of staff that they have in there speaks to what's going to happen in that And that CUP idea, getting input from neighbors, I think is appropriate, may not be legal, I don't know, but it just seems common sense. You get some input because it's no longer just a single-family home for a family. It is now being used for a different purpose in a neighborhood that's, you know, residential. Does that make sense, what I'm saying? So how would you answer all that?
We also have to keep in mind that there are different types of residential care facilities. Some are recognized or licensed under the state and some are not. So to the extent there could be some leeway, I think it would depend on the type of residential care facility that is being contemplated by the applicant.
This one says terminally ill.
Yeah, this one is, so we do have currently on the books just kind of standard residential care facilities. And then this is a specific type of care facility that's a little bit different or different in nature in terms of the activity and how they're they're they function than other care facilities. So there may be a care facility for those with like drug addiction or something like that where you have people that are more mobile, a bit more active. And so the the nature of that is a little bit different than those that are terminally ill. And so this is adding the clarifying language for that type of facility, which is the transgendered care.
So my understanding is it's going to be a little more labor-intensive and there could be turnover with passing of people and then somebody else coming in and it's terminally ill people, which too can last for quite a while as Mr. Hicks Tony mentioned, five years or whatever.
All right, anyone else?
I got, I guess, more of a statement because when I first looked at this, I thought, wow, this this helps out with the process of developing single-family residential or any development with this section six about tentative track maps. And to increase that from four lots and a remainder to a total of ten lots to do a parcel map, which in the surface sounded like a great idea and and still is good. But I see the only difference between that and a track map today is public hearing. And I know we had a conversation earlier and just so that everybody here understands that and you can concur that that's the only difference between a parcel map and a tentative track map today is public hearing?
That is, that has been the the general case of how the procedure is a parcel map didn't require public hearing, a track map did. This modifies the code section based on changes to state law that now track maps with ten lots also fall in. So they now are not called a parcel map, but function in the same way. So that threshold has gone back to, has increased from four to now ten.
Yeah. So whether or not it would be the same process if I did a three-lot parcel map or a nine-lot parcel map, we will call it a parcel map. So it's the same same function to that. Okay. With that, so that being said, just because I've processed a parcel map before in the community. And now today with processing parcel maps, there are more requirements that are the same as a track map with whether it be hydrology, grading plans and all that that have to be done upfront. And I, and I'm doing this for the benefit of the of the commission here is because Ben and I have had this conversation already, we we talk about affordable housing and when it's so front-loaded with so many things that a landowner has to do to get approval, that many of them are deterred from some processing anything. And I'm just bringing this up just so that we understand that there, cost-wise, there really isn't any difference to the applicant except a public hearing. So, it's common. Also, in our last meeting, we talked about signage. And I haven't heard anybody raise issue on that. But there was some comments about the city possibly looking at doing a freeway billboard sign. And within that, looking at that they could extend that sign or footprint of the actual sign, the cantilever over to other properties or pass a property line. Was this driven by the city council? Or is there been some, at some time in the past, did they say, hey, we're looking at this, so we want to change the development code to allow us, to give us the ability to do this?
So right now, when it comes to signs in general, they can't encroach into the public right-of-way or anything of that nature. There was direction provided by a city council in terms of if the city wanted to construct a a sign for for its purpose, whether or not it's a billboard in this traditional sense of doing off-site advertising or just for doing advertising for city events or whatever the case may be, is adding some clear clarity to the language. And then in that case, if it's city-controlled, then it may be a standalone parcel, it may be public right-of-way. And so that encroachment provision also needs to be clear as well because in that case, we may have, you know, a sliver of land that then encroaches into the right-of-way, let's say along Oakland Road where it's providing, you know, some sort of monumentation. And so that would make sense as well. So it's adding just kind of clarity on if the city council ever deems some sort of sign like that to be in the future, then that would be, all those provisions would then be clear.
But but only the city would be allowed to do that, not any private enterprise?
Not beyond what is currently allowed in the code otherwise for private enterprise. So other private entities can still build signs of their own.
Right, but I'm saying, but going over into, because you mentioned about going into a public right-of-way.
Yeah.
But you wouldn't allow private enterprise to go into a public right-of-way?
Correct.
Okay, so there is a difference between what's carved out here if the city wanted to do that. So you mentioned that this was driven by the council some time ago. When was this? How long ago do you think?
I actually don't remember how long ago it was.
Longer than six months, a year?
Yeah.
Okay, longer than that.
Yeah, it was a prior city council.
Okay.
Discussion from my.
All right. So now we have two new council members that have not directed it or have not had an opinion on this.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Tony?
Yes, Ben and I also talked about this. One is, I was on planning commission when the three signs that are currently approved and the code was adopted to allow only those three signs. And there was no discussion at that time about additional signs that were city-owned or on city property. I personally cannot support this at all. This is setting aside, it sets aside from the code in the sign regulation of specifically what the city can do and public enterprise or landowners cannot do. It gives them an exception to basically carve out, if a developer is contemplating a project along the freeway corridor, they can carve out a section of land from that developer, ask him to lease it to them in this case, or sell it to them. And it can be the footprint of the footing for the sign. And then they can overhang from that into the city right-of-way and also into adjacent property. There's, I just think that's fundamentally wrong that we pass an ordinance that is geared towards sign, specifically towards freeway signage. And when it did come through, I was an advocate of actually more signage than just the three. I thought it was important in the long term to allow at least review of signs that were along either Oakland Road or the new Wildwood interchange. And a case was made by staff that that shouldn't be allowed, that it was only three. And there was absolutely no discussion about any city billboards or city-owned billboards. Currently, the city, if I'm not, if I'm correct, I think collects about fifty thousand dollars a year off of the billboards themselves that are existing. Is that, is that a fixed rate or is that a, from what I remember, it was?
The the development agreements that the city has with electronic billboards is a variable rate. So there's a set amount and then it's based on the sale, their gross proceeds of that. And so it's a percentage whichever is higher.
Right.
Is the.
But I believe the base was fifty, fifty thousand a year on that.
It might be something like that. I don't remember off the top of my head.
So it's fifty thousand a year plus the city has, the way this was worded, to me, was pretty deceptive. They're saying that it's, well, let's see, through it. They define what a a city-owned billboard, they call it electronic message center or, where's the other? I'm sorry, I had it, I highlighted too much of it.
Commissioner Hicks, if you can, while you're looking there, if I could just make a comment?
Sure.
Or a question to Ben. What you stated earlier here at the beginning of in your presentation, we can hold out that section and approve or address all the others and not that section?
We can recommend that they not approve that, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, when it comes to if there's a provision, let's say, the signs, I think, in terms of what this discussion is, I think was like, what, fifteen, sixteen, and eighteen?
Yes.
You can make a recommendation of to not recommend approval of those specific stuff and those would then be carried for the city council for discussion. And to Vice Chair Miller's point, because some of the direction related to this predates to council members, they may also not have any appetite for that flexibility. And so it may certainly be that and that's certainly well within.
I would think instead of getting into the financials and all that, we.
Oh, sure.
We should throw it back there and see how, what direction.
Right.
At least my appointee or pointer, how they feel about it.
Yeah. No, and I've talked to a couple of former city councilmen and no one remembers this coming before them. But, you know, there's a lot of documents that come before city council, so it's hard to to read through and understand all of them. But no, I agree, that's definitely our purview and what I would personally like to see, but I'm only one. I have several that I'd like to discuss if anybody, but I can wait my turn.
I've discussed everything that I need to unless you bring up something else that I only need to chime in on. Thank you.
Can I ask a question or is this appropriate time?
Sure.
Okay. So if you look at it from a money standpoint, it sounds like the city does better the more signed billboards that they own. Is that the way I hear it? But on the flip side, there's a sense of fairness maybe between the private owner of billboards and the city owner of billboards and a sense of fairness that the city might be looking for exceptions and negotiating with a developer and you end up maybe not even having a development or something. I don't know. But is that the rub, the sense of fairness?
I, I'll try to answer it in as clear as I can. The, what I'm hearing from people, members of the public, okay, and I happen to share the same view, is that the city is here to provide certain services and not compete with private enterprise.
There you go.
And some of this steps into competing with private enterprise.
Got you.
And I don't think that's the job of government. Now, I've been told that, and if I want to make those statements and all that, I should be on the city council, time will tell. But with that, we're making a decision here and that's part of my thought process of how, why I've arrived at these decisions, and especially on the signage. So, does that answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, and I, I think on a broader view of it is in section two, under conditional use permit review criteria, is, is again, there's a lot of wordage in here and a lot of land use compliance reviews and stuff that have been eliminated in that section. And it's, it's delegated to a staff approval instead of, instead of planning commission approval. And just as a whole, and that, that's pretty consistent throughout this document, there's, and in a lot of the sections, there is a removal of the planning commission's purview and staff-level approval, which, there's a lot of it that makes sense, but there's also a lot of it that in my opinion doesn't. Also, one of the first sections is on conditional use permit revocation. And it's, it spells out a procedure for revoking a conditional use permit. And I think it's basically if if staff determines that there's either been a condition that's not met or a law's been broken or whatever the determination might be, they only have to provide a ten-day notice to the applicant. And then the applicant has to appear before planning commission to defend itself or whatever. There's, there's not a process in there of notification of a, of an applicant that has an existing CUP where they would have a chance to correct the, what staff might look at as a deficiency.
No.
No, Ben, am I reading that wrong?
Yeah, so I, I want to clarify a few things. So one, in the conditional use permit section, so section number two, the only thing that removes planning commission review on that conditional use permit section is arcade games with more than ten mechanical play devices. That's a relative from, I think, the eighties and kind of, you know, the, you know, or in our unfortunate, you know, Terminator Two Judgment Day kind of setting of arcades. But the rest of it is just a duplication of the land use compliance review. There's no other change to the conditional use permit. The second part is based on and consistent with the provisions of how the other procedures are, is anytime we have a public hearing for any item that goes up planning commission, we spell out what the noticing process is. And so a notice for a public hearing is a ten-day public hearing notice. And so this just reiterates that the conditional use permit ordinance or the conditional use permit conditions already identified that the conditional use permit can be revoked. This just establishes a procedure that we do have to do a public hearing notice. It does need to go to the planning commission. The planning commission is the one that officially takes the vote. And so the the code compliance, the remedies that are based on the code enforcement action for any conditional use permit still follows that process. And then if something arises to that condition, then the applicant, as well as any member of the public, will then also be correctly notified of, hey, we're going to take you guys to the planning commission, the one that authorized your approval in the first place, to independently review that. So it isn't staff or whoever unclear entity as defined based on how the conditions are. It sets forth a more consistent policy in practice, which is a standard practice across many agencies that's just not spelled in our code. This does not shorten the period of time of remedy for a, a business or entity or conditional use permit that isn't following the rules. It just sets expectation consistent with best practices and what should be in our code that just hasn't been and follows that. So it isn't something that has come up, it's just, it's just not in the code. It's just, we don't have that process that's in the conditions that it can be revoked.
Okay.
But rather than you going, hey, you guys aren't following the conditions, you're being revoked, it just says, nope, there's actually a process that goes with it and this is, you're going to go back to the, the decision maker that approved the use in the first place is the one that, is the one that can take you the way.
Okay. Well, and one of the other, back to signs again, you know, I was focused more originally on the freeway billboards or the city-owned billboards. the, the freeway billboards or the city on billboards. But there's also in there, uh, for business owners that I think's, um, a stretch is that any lighted sign in a window that projects or where you can see it from the public right away or the street, that those won't be allowed. So if you have an open sign in your business window, that's one of the little LED ones that flashes or not, that that would no longer be allowable.
No, they could still have a LED sign that says open and there's provisions for identifying if a business is open. The flashing light where it's a distraction, that was something that has been flagged and, and received complaints on. And so that would be something of, hey, don't have it flash, just have it say, open. That would be the, the corrective action based on the amendment to the code would just be, just don't have it be, you know, sparkling. Just have it.
I will say the premise of that is typically for safety.
I'm sorry.
It, it's typically for safety. It's a measure of safety. So it's typically businesses that are on like a main thoroughway. And if they have something distracting like, you know, come see Bob, come see Bob, you know, something like that. It's gonna take a driver's eyesight away from the road and look towards that. So I think that's the premise behind this.
But, but it's not, it's not clear in what's spelled out. And the other thing that's, that's in the sign ordinance is that i- if you have a wrap on a truck or, or a trailer with a sign on it that's parked in the parking lot, that's it. That's, uh, unless you can prove in some way that it's not to attract business. That's an illegal sign. And I'll just take the example of Aloha Plumbing that's on County Line Road. They're in Calamasa. So, uh, but there are several plumbing companies that are in Yucapu. They have every truck they have that's wrapped. And, you know, they're advertising their plumbing business. And do we really want to, um, set up a code violation if they have a truck parked in the parking lot?
Yeah. I do wanna note that the signs attached or painted to trailers or vehicles parked on private property, that's already in the sign code.
Well, it's in here, uh, so it's not.
Yeah, but the bold is, uh, the, the change. But the, the vehicles, if they're trying to use it as like a additional sign where they just have like a broken down car and they're using that as, in, as additional signage that's not being calculated, that was already in the, the sign code. So if no action was taken on that provision, that section would, that provision would still be in effect.
And the signs that are in a window though?
Yeah. That, meaning that that would just still count as.
If you drive up and down the boulevard, you know, every, almost every business has a sign of some type in the window. So is the ideal to prevent those completely?
I think it was based on some of the complaints, um, is just the equitability of it. Is you're allowed so much signage on your, your business and so it just counts as part of the signage. So you can have a window signage, can have a building mounted signage. It doesn't really matter. It's just if you're allowed to have this much signage, it gets counted all one in the same. And so you can't use one as, well, it's on the window, so it doesn't count. No, it's still part of your signage.
Well, it's a real common thing to have that.
Yeah.
You know, business hours possibly and you see that. And so you're saying that counts to your, your total square footage of signage?
Um, usually the commercial nature does, um, the hours of operation is pretty minor. And so the, the square footage is, I think, you know.
Yeah.
Within a fraction of.
Well, it's, you know, I've operated a couple of businesses in town and, you know, the signage is always a difficult thing to be able to promote your business. And, uh, so I have a soft spot for businesses that are trying to survive. And you don't have as much of a problem with the, uh, you know, the chain restaurants. Everyone knows what they're getting when they're going to McDonald's or everyone knows what TJ Maxx is. But, um, you know, it's the mom and pops things that I think we should be supporting more that, um, have issues with, you know, more and more sign, uh, restrictions inside. And, uh, you know, there's a number of people that, that have signage that they've put on the side of their vehicle, van, whatever it may be. One of them comes to mind is a tire store that was up on Bryant Street. And they have a box, had a box van that they had parked out in the parking lot. It was also used for deliveries and other stuff. But I would hate to see that become an issue where, you know, they can't, uh, maintain their box truck with their wrap on it. And so you're saying under this, that would not happen?
I, I think usually when it comes to that, so that, I mean, that is, since that's a existing code provision. Um, usually I think it kinda comes down to, uh, kinda the nature of it. So if, uh, if that box truck never left in that example and was always there, then it'd be part of the signage of it. But in that case of that, that was a mobile truck service. So they parked it at the site because that was their home base operations. But it wasn't meant to be a sign for the business and similar to other businesses.
No, actually it is meant to be a sign for the business.
Well, I mean.
I mean, that's the reality of it.
But yeah.
You know, otherwise they wouldn't have a, uh, you know, the whole thing wrapped. They know that it's gonna spend a large percentage of its time sitting there and they wanna take advantage of that. So are we, are we attempting to eliminate that completely? It's just a question. So I'm just.
I think it comes down to the approach of code enforcement has not been in that, that vein.
I think something that comes to mind, if any of you guys have been on Bryant, there's a, looks to be a new business. It's a plumbing business. And they kinda have a makeshift sign in front of their house. It's a big four by eight sign and there's like three vehicles that are wrapped in it. When you're driving, that is, it is super distracting. It's at a resident.
Yeah.
So this whole ordinance, that prop, that business is what's coming to my mind. So I'm wondering, was that an example of the premise of where this came from?
Um, so.
Not to call that business out.
Yeah. Yeah. So the vehicles was already in the code. So that really wasn't, um, the, the addressing, part of the prohibited signs was just, uh, some complaints we've gotten. Um, uh, of residents driving along at night and just, I think, the volume of businesses have added really bright LED lights to their windows. And those that especially are flashing and just, I think, the destructive nature. And some of it's the glare that's being produced where you're seeing, I think, some of the window displays literally like illuminating into or approaching the right away. And so I think it's just that volume where they're kinda going like, when did we? I think one of the comments was, when did we come Vegas in terms of just the amount of light pollution? And so this was to help add, I think, some clarity and just make sure it's like, hey, let's be reasonable, I think, in the overall, uh, scope of things to help with the code enforcement activity, um, to address that, at least to make sure it's like, the, the, the commercial signage is, is, is good. It's a benefit for the, the businesses. But let's also not just be, uh, a distraction towards drivers as they're moving along the roadway as well. And I think it's, you know, sign codes are very difficult because you're trying to find that balance and, and it's, it's not a, an easy feat. But it was trying to at least give a little bit more, um, flexibility. So then that way we can make sure that the one issue that we're having pop up is at least addressed. But without, you know, addressing or, or cannibalizing that, the true intent of actually being able to provide the signage for businesses and making sure that that asset is intact.
May I comment? Okay. Um, I, I kinda like what Dennis said about, you know, going back to council, see what their feeling is on fifteen to eighteen. I'd like to see it all condensed. I'd like to see it just simplified. It sounds to me that the concerns are safety and look. And in this day and age, I think we're all going electronic most of the time. So signage is maybe old school, but it is a concern from those two perspectives. And I think for planning commission, go back to council like Dennis said, maybe approve everything except fifteen to eighteen and get some clarification on that.
That can be a motion. So if somebody does wanna make a motion, we.
I got one, one quick question if, if you can hold on to your motion for a second.
Well, you make the motion because you know how to work.
Well, I know. Well, I'm gonna let you.
I still have a few questions.
I'm gonna let you take care of it. Ben, did, did I remember, and, and I'm going off my memory here, was there like a fifteen second rule on a flashing sign? Isn't the billboards have to be, put their message on there for fifteen seconds before it can rotate to another one?
It'll be, uh, eight seconds.
It's eight seconds?
Yep.
Okay. And so the gist of this is that have no flashing signs whatsoever. But the billboard signs could have an eight second change of message.
So even like the, the open, uh, sign where we talked about the flashing, the eight seconds where it's just, you know, that is fine. It's the, it's, you know, the strobe light effect, uh, is the, the bigger concern.
So, so you're saying a flashing sign, if you had an open sign that lit up for fifteen seconds and then turned off for five and lit up for fifteen or.
It would be off for fifteen, but I think that would be.
Fifteen, rotated on a fifteen second.
And I don't think most businesses would wanna have their sign go off for that line.
But I'm just, I'm, I'm using it as an, as an example. So, so if, if somebody did have a sign like that, that would be acceptable.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just one clarification.
So my other question would be section four on the, uh, uh, land use compliance reviews. A couple of questions. One is, you know, there's some talk about transient traffic or transient, uh, contractors. Uh, as far as business licensing went, uh, is there any provisions for licensing those types of businesses? Say, for instance, we have the festivals uptown and there's outside vendors from out of town. Are we, we're not requiring a business license any longer. Do they, are they required to have a, a land use compliance review?
Not if they're part of a special event. So if they're part of an authorized event, either a city event or a, you know, special event for, you know, that, that private entity is doing. They don't need to have a land use compliance review for, for that, just because they're not a, a long term.
Okay.
Kinda thing. So they wanna trigger that.
Well, with, without that and without a business license, how do you capture the sales tax revenue or off of a city event or a private event?
I don't believe the business license itself, if they're like a out of town vendor that's doing, let's say, the, uh, music arts festival. I don't believe that the business license ever created some sort of nexus for, um, the sales stats for that. I'm, I'm not familiar with that. I know in terms of past practice, because of how the business license program was. And the, the business license program isn't a planning commission thing since it's part of just the municipal code.
Sure.
But, but it was a very ma- uh, very, uh, archaic and very hand, uh, very archaic and very labor intensive manual process. And so a lot of times when it came to some of those events, you know, they couldn't show up until they had gotten the business license. But then it took a long time for that to go through. And so city councils, I think, direction was, you know, hey, if they're showing up to some of these events or in some cases, you know, like musicians were, they were getting paid by the city to be at these events, but then had to pay for a business license. It didn't quite make sense because it just created a lot of, uh, kind of bureaucracy in terms of how that was administered. And so that was, I think, kinda the change of direction for, for that overall.
Okay. So that's, I guess that's, you know, that's one of the things we're dealing with out at Live Oak is how to make sure we capture that sales tax revenue for the city. And I think it's important we try to capture it across the board. And, uh, because it can be a substantial amount. Now, on the tax form that you fill out for sales tax, you're supposed to list where that revenue was generated from. And, uh, um, so that it goes to the proper city or county or whatever it is. Uh, but my concern is that that's not always happening and I don't know if there's any way to actually track that or, or do it. Uh, but it can be a substantial amount of money. And without a city business license and without some way to report that, I think we lose too much of it. But again, you know, that business license is out of our purview. So on, uh, on this, on the land use compliance, wh- what would the fee be? And what would the turnaround be for a new business?
Um, oh, I, oh, for the, the, the zoning clearance, I think.
Zoning clearance, I'm sorry.
So we are, um, working on user fee update in general across kind of the board. And so we're reassessing it. The intent with this would be is where the business license was an annual process. So you had, you know, initial ninety nine dollars or whatever, plus an additional like state fee and then a reoccurring cost would, this would be a one time fee. It would be to help address if any, you know, TIs were required or if there was any entitlements and stuff. It would be to help flag any of those compliance stuff, help set up the fire department kind of review for commercial businesses and make sure all that stuff was done. And so the intent was really to replace what was an ongoing annual expense every year. And that kinda process would be kinda one time. The goal would not be to see a significant cost increase, um, from the initial ninety nine dollars. And then what we're trying to do is wrap it into the economic development package as well. So as we had talked about the, the electronic messaging billboards, is there is a discounted rate, um, for those are part of the chamber of commerce. There's also a free advertising spot on all those billboards. And so getting them into that list and essentially trying to provide a turnaround service of, hey, if you're going through kinda permits, if you do need TI work, uh, in building permits or, you know, you do need a zoning or like a conditional use permit, we'll help you through this process. Make sure that you're going into that site with eyes wide open versus just, you know, blind and then finding out later on that, that you have these issues. But then to wrap it into a program where there's also a legitimate, um, kind of outcome benefits that they'd get from that through economic development and trying to provide a more full circle kinda benefit. Um, so then that way we're kinda killing a few different birds with one stone and getting rid of just the annual process that the business license did and really just focusing on, um, brick and mortar type of establishments and making sure that that's all cleared away.
I guess my concern would be for property owners or, uh, lessors is that if they have a property they're trying to lease out and they have an interested party, uh, what's that timeframe look like? You know, if they, if they have an interested party, of course, he's not gonna sign a lease until he gets approval from the city. And so is that a three day turnaround, a five day, cause you're talking about distributing to all departments?
Yeah. So we, um, we have kinda created a internal layout, um, you know, on the assumption that if this does go forward, we kinda know how it would work. The intention was it would be a quick turnaround. So then that way, if there is something that, let's say, a, 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 let's see, needs a conditional use permit, they can know that early in the process and can get that started. If there's no requirements, then they can get that started done, you know, effectively too. And so that way, the end outcome will be is what it, the timeline it took for them to get a business license in the old system and what this process would be, this process will be a lot faster.
Than a business license?
Than what the business license was, given how manual the process was. Cause that went through, uh, a different department. Someone had to manually get all that stuff in. They inputted a bunch of data and all this stuff. The new system would be a lot more digital. It'd be looking at the site location and then kinda the details. Is this a existing commercial center? Is this, uh, new? Is this tied into it? Is it change of use? If it's not, then it's really easy. And then it's just like, all right, we'll let you know. And then we'll let, uh, you know, the fire department know that there's a new business here. So that when they do their kind of annual inspections or whenever they are able to go out there, they know, you know, who the contact is. And it's just to help increase that kind of, that, that layer of network. Um, but that's it. But it's meant to be, um, uh, within kind of like a two week turnaround for everything.
Okay. Yeah, that, I said, that's just my concern is what the timeframe would be. Cause normally, you know, you lease a building and then, then go get a business license, you know, and, uh,
And one of the challenges we found is sometimes people will lease a building and they find out that their business wasn't allowed in that zone in the first place. And so we're trying to solve that problem as well as that way people can kinda resolve some of those issues. Or if they, if there's any issues that they need to resolve ahead of time, we can.
Yeah.
Catch that.
Well, in the past, you know, we'd just go down and talk to someone in planning and, hey, I wanna do this. Is that allowable? hey, I wanna do this. Is that allowable in this use? And you'd get a yes or no over the counter and, uh,
Some people didn't.
Some people.
Quick, quick question. Go ahead.
So one of the things we can do is because there are quite a few of these different ordinances, if you do have concerns, we can make those recommendations with an emotion. So I don't know if anybody else have any bit of concerns, but that is one, one thing we can do to kind of move this section along. That's my recommendation. Anybody wanna make a motion?
And then we do have, uh, the public comment period as well. Though I don't know if there's any comments on.
Is there any public comment?
No.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Um, I, I would like to ask a couple more questions and I'm sorry, I apologize for the, the time, but, um, I'll try to limit it, I'm sorry. These are just big documents that have a lot of, uh, a lot of questions. Um, well, I'll leave it at that. Sorry.
Okay. Good discussion. Um, I would make a motion that we follow and accept the staff report on the recommendation for ordinance number four fifty with the, um, caveat that the sign information fifteen to eighteen be sent back for council to review.
Just to confirm so that the recommendation in favor of all items except fifteen through eighteen and that council, um, provide additional, uh, direction on those.
Exactly.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
I would in particular like to be in reference to the, uh, city.
I think in point of order and that we have a motion, we need a second if we can have any discussion.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that motion? Okay, no second.
Second it for, for some discussion.
Well, in, in looking at what we're here to do, it looks like we're reviewing it for the changes that the city is recommending. That's gonna go to the council and everybody up here brings up some very valid points. You know, uh, a concern is switching it from a commission review to staff, to the staff approval, but that's not part of the change. Same thing with billboards. We're not, the, uh, planning commission or the, I'm sorry, the planning department of the city, they're not changing the billboard conditions inside the already existing, um, uh, city ordinance, correct? We're just changing language.
There would be some flexibility if the city were to construct some sort of stretcher, advertising stretcher, be it for city staff or something like that.
But I'm not seeing that in the proposed code.
It would, it clarifies the provisions on it and adds some clarity. Uh, so it isn't, um, it isn't as clear as it, as it could be.
So where Commissioner Miller brings up about the moving it into the public right of way, um, for the city to do, but not necessarily for the general, general public, that's not a change. That's it going into effect. That's an already existing code.
No. No, it isn't. It's not an existing code.
Okay, so, so, I, I believe you.
Sorry.
Show me in, show me in the ordinance that's proposed today where that change is, is into effect.
Yeah, it's in, uh, what, fifteen? Yeah, in, um, in section sixteen eighty-seven point zero seven oh five, general provision. It says, except for city communication billboards, no sign or any portion thereof shall extend over a property line or onto adjacent property or public right of way or public, uh, property.
Right, but in looking at the changes on page twenty-eight of the draft of that section?
Well, the,
Is that what you're looking at?
The highlighted portion of it in the section says, except for city communication billboards. So right now, the way the ordinance is right now, the sign ordinance.
Okay, I see, I see exactly what you're saying. I stand corrected on that.
Right, everything in bold is a change.
Yeah, I got you.
And so, yeah, with, with the, uh, the city-owned billboards, uh, we currently have, uh, an ordinance in place that only allows three billboards within the city. When that ordinance came through, there was no exception in that ordinance that said unless it was a city-owned billboard or city-owned property.
Right, gotcha. So except for that ordinance right there that, that we were discussing, that you just clarified, I don't think there's a really a need to send the entire sign ordinances to the council for review because really they're just gonna have it fall back onto the city staff to do and it's just gonna come back to us.
I believe, if, if I may, I, I believe what will happen is, is it will be brought back to the council. Staff's gonna present it back to the council on what the planning commission has stated and, and want clarification. Uh, my comments earlier was we have two new council members, okay, that we need input from. Okay, because that, that's a substantial difference than there was when this was originally directed. And, and with that input, it very well may come back to the same thing. And if so be it, it comes back to the same thing, then, then we'll, we'll look at it then and, and make that determination.
But is that defeating the purpose? Because council would have a chance to review it when we send them, this to them for the first reading anyways.
So I, I think the, the perspective or at least how the motion is carried is it's going, hey, by and large, the overall sections of the ordinance is acceptable. This one, these kind provisions give us more concern. And so, uh, you know, this has a little bit more, we want you guys to give more input to that, that policy change. And if you deem acceptable, then, then that's your guys' stall, but we're flagging it as something that, that gives us consternation. And so I think that's part of the nature of that motion is, is to flag of not going, hey, we think this is good as is. This is rather of something, hey, you guys maybe discuss it. And we're not in agreement that this is something that, that we're recommending, um, at least in terms of those specific sections. So I think the motion is beneficial and given the context of the discussion highlights the fact of that, that, that warrants, uh, council to take a closer look of, uh, whether or not those sections end up in the final ordinance as it gets read or if it gets removed entirely or modified or sent back with additional directions and council can, can offer a multitude of different options for, for how to treat those provisions.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, is there another motion?
Well, there is a motion and a second on it. So we, unless somebody's operating a substitute motion, we have to vote on that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion passed.
Anybody opposed?
Was there any opposition?
Um, I'll, I'm a no.
Okay. All right, motion passes. Five to one. Moving on to four. Open the public hearing. Staff presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Today I bring before you case number PLN PHE twenty-five zero 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 one. A tentative tract map, TTM number two zero seven eight six on a nine-point-one-eight acre property at the northwest intersection of Sixth and Avenue G for a twenty-eight lot, single-family residential development in the RS ten M, uh, land use district, which will include a lettered lot for drainage, uh, drainage management and a perimeter fence that is six feet in height. Uh, the submittal also includes the architectural review for the proposed one and two-story homes. Uh, the applicant today is Far West Industries and they are here tonight. The site is located on the northwest corner of Sixth Place and Avenue G, as previously discussed. It is a largely flat site that is currently vacant and unimproved. The general plan designation for that site is RS ten M and is, uh, adjacent to the Las Casitas Mobile Home Park to the west, uh, Yucca Creek to the north and single-family residential development to the south and east. A little bit of history on this parcel, uh, previously a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the parcel, um, was completed that went, that took the parcel from RM, RL two-point-five to RS ten M. Uh, it also included a tentative map to create, uh, similarly twenty-eight single-family residential lots of at least ten thousand square feet. Uh, the tentative tract map had an expiration date of November seventh, twenty-twenty-one and no action was ever taken towards the final map for that. And so the proposed application allows for the continued development of that site and allows for some of the minor changes uh, to the initial approval based on some of the site engineering design efforts that took place. Uh, I would say the, the largest of which is that it took the, uh, drainage basin lettered lot from the southwest corner uh, to the northwest corner, uh, as, as seen on this map here. The subdivision does allow for twenty-eight lots along two new public roads. Uh, the right-of-way width provides for the parking, landscape, uh, sidewalk and curb and the, uh, water quality basin at the northwest corner of the site, as previously mentioned. To accommodate RV parking in the side yards, the applicant has proposed rolled curbs on the interior of the site. Um, and lastly, the grading will raise the existing topography of the site so that all of the pads are outside of the floodplain. Tentative map, uh, also will be required to annex into a lighting, landscaping and maintenance district. The tentative tract map is consistent with all of the general plan requirements and development code requirements and includes block wall to the south and east as well as vinyl fencing on the interior as well as the north and west property lines. Uh, included in tonight's, uh, review is the architectural review for the site. Uh, the package includes the building designs, entry monument sign and conceptual landscaping. Uh, there are two different floor plans that are provided, uh, which will provide a total of three different elevation types as well as reverses. Uh, plan one is a single-story, uh, plan that includes two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five square feet of living area with a four-bedroom, three-bath floor plan. Plan two is a two-story plan that includes, uh, three thousand two hundred and fifty-six square feet of living area with a four-bedroom, uh, three-bath floor plan as well. There are two architectural elevations proposed with each floor plan, uh, with three total elevations that will, uh, make up the site including a farmhouse elevation, a ranch elevation and a Monterey elevation. This is the single-story plan one. On top is the, um, ranch elevation and on the bottom is the farmhouse elevation. Here's plan two. Um, on, oh no, on the top-ish and then the kind of side there is the Monterey elevation and then the bottom left is the, uh, also farmhouse elevation. As part of this project, there is a, a monument sign that's to be reviewed by the planning commission. It, it mentions the name of the site allure, um, and it is set within a landscaped portion at the southwest corner of the site or southeast or corner of the site. A mitigated negative declaration was previously prepared and adopted by the city council as a part of the original project approval. The mitigated negative declaration prepared for this project had considered the potential environmental impacts that could occur as a result of the project. And all available evidence indicated that any potential significant impacts could be mitigated to a less than significant level. Uh, and these mitigation measures are incorporated into the original conditions and, uh, with the new conditions and in the approval packet uh, for this project. So it, um, it will be exempt, categorically exempt, or is it?
Uh, notice of determination as no additional environmental reviews needed.
Thank you, Ben. Uh, as a part of the project review, we did, uh, provide notices to all surrounding neighbors, uh, within a three-hundred-foot radius of the site and two responses were received. The first response had concerns about the effect on wildlife, traffic, noise, uh, potential crime impacts as well as fire hazards. Uh, it should be noted that the site is substantially surrounded by development and has been disced on a regular basis that, uh, some of the coyotes mentioned within that letter are not a protected species and that lastly, uh, the site is not within any high fire hazard severity zone and that the clearing of a lot of the shrubs there should actually reduce the, uh, potential for fire impacts. Um, the second response that was received, uh, had concerns to the unique geography of the intersection of Sixth Place and Avenue G as well as some of the speeds of traffic in the surrounding area. As a condition of approval of this project, a stop warrant analysis was conditioned and a stop sign will be installed by the applicant if the addition is warranted. Here are a couple, a couple of pictures of the site. It's much more brown right now. And so it is staff's recommendation that, uh, you approve the tentative tract map, adopt the subdivision findings in the agenda report, uh, review and if considered approvable, uh, acceptable, approve the architectural design and conceptual landscaping for the project. Uh, determine the project does not require any additional environmental review pursuant to secret guidelines one, five, one, six, two, A and direct staff to file a notice of determination. Uh, if you guys have any questions, I am available to answer. The applicant is also here, who's been, uh, really great to work with on this project.
Any commissioners have any questions? Start at the end.
Yeah, just on subdivisions in general, is the planning commission, um, is there any clarification on requirements for street lights or for fire hydrants or the number of them?
Um, so those are kind of, uh, two different parts. So the, the street lights are established based on the improvement level of the area. And so based on where it is in the general plan, it will establish where, uh, the spacing is. And so it's usually the street intersection and then we'll be back and then it, and then the overall spacing kind of mid-block. Here will probably be just at the street corner and then at the end of the cul-de-sac and then the, uh, fire hydrants is to provide the, uh, distance as a hose lays, um, to all corners of the buildings. And so as they do their final plotting and do kind of that analysis, they'll place the hydrants based on that requirement. So they'll kind of come through on those final engineering plans.
Any other commissioners?
I have one. Oh, go ahead. So my question was, it's only two car garages I'm seeing on there and it's being cul-de-sacs. I'm just worried about parking being an issue, cause you see that in Chapman Heights a lot and all of these. Is Avenue G and Sixth Street gonna be no parking on those curbs? If the streets overflow into that? You have four vehicles, a house, is it gonna overflow into that? So are there gonna be no parking on those? Cause it's high traffic, narrow and curves. I just wonder about safety and traffic on that.
So I would say in addition to the garages, there's all, or I think the garages are a little bit larger.
I think there was a tandem garage.
Oh, are they tandem?
I, I think there were tandem garages.
They're, they're three-car garages and then the, uh, they also have driveways that are twenty-five feet in length, their minimum twenty-two feet in length. Um, based on kind of the variable setback that we can allow. Um, there's also parking that could be used within the cul-de-sacs themselves. The streets are wide enough to accommodate parking along either side and then at the, the kind of cul-de-sacs as well. Um, I am not sure about the width or we would allow for parking along, uh, Sixth and Avenue G. That'd be a great question for Katrina.
Yeah, so those would have, um, because they will be conditioned to widen the street to the ultimate condition. Um, in the, in those locations where it's widened, there would be adequate room for parking. Um, of, not near the intersection, that's just vehicle code. So there would be a limit to how close they could park to the intersection. But where it's widened, um, yes, there would be street parking that's allowed there.
The only street that's getting widened is, um, Avenue G.
That's correct.
Utilize the existing curb and cutter on, uh, Seventh.
Correct, uh, Sixth Place, yes.
Sixth Place, yeah. Um, I, I have a question with, uh, LLMD. What all, in the LLMD, what all areas is it covering in this particular trap, track? Is it just the, uh, detention basin area? Or is there areas, uh, in the, between the sidewalk and, uh, curb?
Yes, so there is some landscaping that is between, um, the sidewalk and I believe there's a, a wall that's going to be serving a little bit as a retaining wall. Um, that will be covered as part of the LLMD. So the landscaping along Sixth Place and along Avenue G, um, as well as the basin that's located in the northwest corner.
And then the street lights as well.
Yeah.
Question, comment?
Can I mention or? Okay. Um. Date Street, you know, when you come down from Bryant going westbound. Um, I think it has been a concern where there's street parking and not a whole lot of room for traffic going to and from. And you maneuver and kind of make it happen if it's congested. So under, um, circulation, under tentative tract map, I think it says thirty six feet from curb to curb. Is that the width of these streets that the, the cul-de-sac ends on, the internal streets?
Yeah, that's our stranded, uh, standard, uh, uh, kind of local street or neighborhood street kind of width.
Some of the cars, what, eight feet or something like that wide? And you had cars parked on both the east and west side of those streets, you'd still have twenty feet. Which if you have two eight foot cars, you've still got a little bit of room to work. Is that it?
Yeah, so it would be able to accommodate, uh, parking on each side of the road plus the two-way traffic. And based on the length of these cul-de-sacs, it's not a lot of distance. So, uh, probably in, in terms of the comparable like the Chapman Heights. Uh, the more compact neighborhoods of Chapman Heights where you have longer stretch of roads and you have that. It'll be a little bit different setting just because of how kind of shorter that sediment is and, and that kind of. Um, kind of variability. And then some of those neighborhoods in Chapman Heights where you see more of the kind of crowding on the streets. Um, uh, at least in terms of street parking, those, uh, those residential densities are higher. And so the street whiffs or the, the lot whiffs of those neighborhoods are considerably shorter than what this is. So this is providing areas for, uh, side yard RV parking. And so most of the neighborhoods in Chapman Heights, um, actually I don't think any neighborhood in Chapman Heights has. Actual provisions for, I think, RV parking kind of within those neighborhoods. And so, um, definitely a little bit more width in terms of the lot, in terms of where you could park vehicles as well. So the, the setting will be a little bit different and then, yeah, the, the plans do have a tandem parking, which is. Nice to have three car garage.
Thanks.
Are there any fencing requirements on that?
So the applicant did provide a fencing plan, which includes a block wall with two, uh, with a ribbon of two, um. Split face CMU, uh, on the south and east property lines. And then, um, there's a retaining wall combo vinyl wall, um, along the west property line. And then on the north property line is a vinyl, uh, fence as well. In, on the interior of the site, it is also vinyl.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff? All right, would the applicant like to come up?
Hi, good evening. Um, my, my name's Brian Berksen with Far West Industries. I'm the project manager for this project and many, many others. I'm joined here with, uh, with, by my side with George Alvarez. Uh, he also is with Far West Industries, Land Development Manager. He's been there thirteen years. I've been there twenty one years. So we're, we're in a business that, uh, we find our spot and we stay. Um, we, uh, Far West Industries is a family run business. Uh, dedicating to building better lives and delivering exceptional homes. Uh, we built here in Yucapu before. We built on Seventeenth Street, uh, Parkside Village One, twenty eight units, uh, single family residential. Uh, and we just completed Artisan, which is seventy units on Seventeenth Street between Avenue D and E. Uh, that just closed out, uh, within the last few months and now we are looking at Allure. And just to, to shout out to, to the staff here, you know, I work in a lot of cities and I truly enjoy the staff that works here. Uh, you get more of the family atmosphere here than you get, uh, just the, uh, the stale city business stuff. So I do appreciate the fact that everybody here is very cordial and willing to go the extra mile. Um, we recently purchased this piece of property, uh, from a prior owner who failed to extend his map and that's why it expired. Like you see on our project tonight, uh, with twenty eight lots, it's the same project that had been already approved. We, uh, made some modifications to it, not to the number of units, not to the streets. Uh, we tried to save some, some import. There was about a hundred thousand yards of import that would have been required. Uh, we re-engineered it to drop that down by half by re, reorienting certain things, including the drainage. So in fact, not only do we save half of the import, we also are saving about fifty percent of the length of storm drain pipe that goes underground. That goes to that detention basin, which then will go into the flood channel and we're working with flood control to, uh, get those approvals. Um, so the street layout's the same, the number of units are the same, the size is the same. We're not asking for any changes on any of that. We do have two plan types as Christian, uh, mentioned. The, uh, Plan One is twenty nine thirty five. It has three or four bedroom, um, options with an optional casita. If you want to use that, uh, three bath, it's a three car tandem garage. So it does have not only, uh, the twenty five, twenty two to twenty five or even longer foot driveways, which you could park, you know, definitely two cars for sure. But then you'll have three cars inside that you can park in every home. Uh, the Plan Two is thirty two hundred fifty six square feet. It's got four to six bedrooms with an optional loft or casita. And again, same thing with the three car tandem garage, uh, porch covered patio, uh, for outdoor living and that sort of stuff. Um, the, uh, farmhouse ranch in Monterey are the three elevations. There's two for the, the Plan One, which is farmhouse and ranch. And for the Plan Two is farmhouse and Monterey. Um, all homes will have a fifteen foot wide side yard RV driveway. So you can park your RV on the side of the house.
In addition to the, uh, three car garage plus its front driveway.
Right, so there's that plus they'll have the ability or option to add, um, the services, the clean out. The fifty amp breaker service if they, if the homeowner chooses. Uh, all the yards are deep, so there's a lot of room for people to play and, and enjoy their, uh, space. The, uh. The widening of Avenue G is a slight widening, so it will, you know, I, I, I understand when we talk about thirty six feet wide, uh, streets. Curb face to curb face. If it's any smaller than that, just for clarification, the fire department who conditions these projects. Uh, would, would have made us put in no parking on one side of the street if it was less than this. This is the standard for one car on each side to park and two cars to be able to fluidly move, including emergency vehicles. So, uh, this is definitely not a narrow street. This is a standard, normal, uh, street. And the fencing is, was asked about, yeah, we do have fencing that will be, um. Uh, placed at the perimeters and in, in interior walls, everything will have fencing. It'll almost all be vinyl with, uh, some block. Uh, with the planning department, we agreed that we would put a dual row of split face block along Avenue, uh, Sixth Place. Uh, so there'd be a double row of that. I think that was one of the, um, items. And, uh. The, uh, couple of things I just wanted to, to make sure we don't not, I, I don't want them to be missed. Uh, one of the conditions, number seventy seven in the staff report was, was just incorrect. It just needs, it's a typo. It says twenty, for the variable setback, it says a minimum of twenty five feet with an average of twenty five feet. It should read a minimum of twenty two feet with an average of twenty five feet, which Christian mentioned earlier in the staff report. But I just want to clarify that that, uh, needs to be, uh, the typo should be corrected. And the other one is the removal of condition eighty four. That's to mandate that we have an HOA. Uh, this is not going to have an HOA because we are able to annex all of the, uh, um, call it camp, common area improvements. Which is the landscaping along, uh, Sixth Place and Avenue G and the detention basin and the lights. All that is going to be annexed into the city's LMD. And therefore there's no, uh, requirement for us to need that condition number, uh, eighty four. Because we won't actually set up an HOA in this community. And with that, um, we appreciate your consideration for our new project, our next project. Um, once we get our hands on a project, this company that I said I've been with for over twenty one years, uh, we build it and we finish it. And we will complete and start this project.
And it'll look great when we're done. Take a look at Artisan.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, we are, we are shovel ready. So if this does get approved tonight and we can get, uh, everything in, in line, we should be in the ground within the next thirty to sixty days. And with that, we are both here to answer any questions you might have for us, uh, or any questions a resident might have.
Commissioners, does anybody have any questions?
I, I'd just like to say, I greatly appreciate your project. I think it's, uh, uh, it's probably one of the best single family home projects that we've seen come through the commission in a number of years. Um, just the size of the lots and the size of the homes. And I think it's a great addition to that area that needs a boost and, uh, and I, I, you know, this comes back to a builder who's willing to. Put the investment in for a good project and we don't see that very often anymore. So I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Appreciate that.
I, I like, I like family owned. Um, and, uh, I appreciate your presentation. It was very, um, articulate, uh, clear and professional. And, um, some of the other projects you've done, I've seen some of those and they look good and, and, uh, I'm excited about it.
Thank you.
Dennis?
You indicated that you're gonna do, uh, you're gonna bring in some import, fifty thousand yards of, of import. That's to be able to elevate above the five hundred year floodplain.
That's correct.
And so the clarification, the, the slab has to be what, one foot above the hundred year?
Two feet.
Two feet above, okay. Um, second question is, um, on. Street B backing up to Sixth Place. The back of the homes and then on the side of the homes of facing G Street. Are there window treatments or something of that? Because they do face streets and that, and I don't think there was any elevation.
Was already thought of by planning department. Uh, Christian and I had that conversation, uh, a couple of months ago. Uh, we had our architect draw in on the plans. They show enhanced elevations on those rear yards along Sixth Place. Uh, for that exact purpose because they are elevated and you'll see them driving by. So there are now enhanced elevations included.
Okay, so, and, and enhanced elevations, there'll be some type of window, eyebrows over windows, shutters, something like that?
We have some siding on the game wall ends as well.
Okay, all, all right. And the same thing on the side of the homes that face, that would face G?
On the four houses on the side.
Side, yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Anything? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Do we have any public comment?
We have one.
Okay. Ms. Joe Sutt?
Hi, I'm Joe Sutt and I live in Wildwood Canyon Mobile Home Estates, which is very close to this development. And, um, uh, my concern is about Sixth Place. Um, I hear, it, it looks like it's going to be a beautiful development. I mean, that's great. But we already have a lot of traffic issues on Sixth Place. And, um, with the mobile home park, um, after the completion of the, the beautiful new bridge and all that, it's, it's very nice. But that street is still only thirty two feet wide. And the, the streets inside the mobile home park are only thirty feet wide and we cannot park on our streets. We have to park in our driveways. And it is a family park, so there are more cars. It didn't used to be a family park, but it's a family park. And there are more cars than there are parking places. So where, and then when the city of Yucapu also put in a nice left turn lane for us on, uh, for us. I'm sure it was personally for us. And we did submit a petition and they did put a turn lane on, um, Wildwood Canyon Road into the park. And it's really has helped a lot with the traffic and the fear of being rear ended on that little freeway that Wildwood Canyon Road has become. Um, but unfortunately, that street, Wildwood Canyon Road, is very difficult to park on. Um, it's very dangerous and as you can see, we're older people, a lot of older people there. And it's, I would not park there. I cannot park there and my friends can't park there. So the only parking we have is in our own spaces, in our park and in the guest parking, which is not very adequate for the. Number of people that live there and the number of cars that come. My concern is that Sixth Place, the street, and from what I'm understanding. That development will be also using that street parking. We're very limited and I'm worried about having to share a street parking that is already at a premium. Um, what I would like to see is, I would like to see Sixth Place widened. And some kind of negotiation with that development to put in some kind of extra parking. It's a really dangerous place to park. And I find that thirty feet or thirty two feet is not really enough. When you come out of my mobile home park, and there goes my time almost, when you come out of that mobile home park. Uh, there's, uh, there are signs for no parking for, I think it's twenty feet or something like that. But it's very dangerous because you can't see the cars coming either way. It's, it's quite dangerous. So I would like to see that looked at and addressed. I don't know how to fix it. I'm assuming somebody, somebody will know how to fix that. But I, I think the people who are already living there need some consideration in this too. Um, and again, I think the, the development looks fine, but help us with that parking issue, please.
Thank you so much.
And I want to apologize for, I know you're seeing me nod, nodding off over here. Uh, I have some health issues, so.
No problem.
It's not, you guys are not boring at all. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. All right, with that, the public hearing is closed and Commissioner discussion. How about we start on this in this time? Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't. I think it's a, a good looking community. I like the elevations, the landscaping. I think it's a great addition to Yucapu.
Okay, Dennis? All right, I'd just like to add that I, I too think it is a great development. It will also give the city almost nine hundred thousand dollars in diff funds, which we definitely need that for our city. So I think it's a good development.
No comment?
Yeah, I just, to address the public comment, I just, uh, what we heard tonight as far as the depth of the driveways. And the width of the, uh, interior roads, I don't, I, I really don't see that you'll have. You know, since they can park three cars in a garage, two cars minimum in the driveway. And then they have a fifteen foot space on the side. They would have to have, you know, eight cars at each house before they would even be out into the street. So, um, I, I think overall compared to some of the developments that we've seen where they have such small lots. Very little driveway to park, you know, this is, this is probably one of the best developments you could get for your area to, to limit. Just exactly what you're concerned about. So I, I hope it doesn't cause you any, any concern. Thank you.
Yeah, if I was, if I was her living in that park, um, I would probably be thinking the same thing with the development going in. How's that going to affect street parking over there? Um, does staff, do you have anything that you would want to say to address that concern? Or is it something that you would take a look at and somebody gets back to her?
Um, I think, uh, Commissioner Hitt's perspective, I think, is, is probably valid in terms of the capacity that. Is available within the subdivision. Uh, Sixth Place is kind of, you know, is not catty corner to any of the houses. It's further out. And so there's a little bit of a further track. Um, certainly the, the accessibility within the mobile home park itself is, is certainly challenging. Uh, cities are restricted, uh, in terms of enforcement. So we can only kind of enforce the rules as they were established when the park was established. And so we do find, especially in terms of older mobile home parks. Um, you know, drive aisles are, are oftentimes a little bit insufficient. And so, um, it is kind of a battle that we do have when, uh, different parts try to bring in different coaches. That might kind of stretch the limits of what can fit there. And you start seeing kind of a cascading effect of, of, of the limits of space and what can be done. Um, but I think in this case, Commissioner Hitt's perspective of the overall capacity, the, the, the width of the lots. And that, that you're probably not going to see a whole lot of spillage over where you're seeing a heavy conflict between people competing for parking on Sixth Place. Just because there is such availability there and, um, as much as I would love to have HRs, I don't think, uh, most spouses, uh. In most households would let them have that circumstance.
Ben's a car guy. He probably has that many.
I'm too shy.
Um, I would just like to also mention that if for any reason there does happen to be a traffic issue, if there's something with sight distance. Um, I have personally worked with Ms. Sutt to. with Ms. Sutt to restrict the parking at the entrance of the mobile home park and to add, as she mentioned, the left turn lane, so if there does happen to be an issue, she can record it, as she has done before, to our neighborhood traffic calming program, and we would be happy to look at that. Hopefully, that concern is not warranted, and I, and I believe that we're kind of thinking that it won't be, but we're always happy to address any sort of traffic issue if it arises.
Wonderful. All right, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move, definitely approve PLN-PAC-25-0001.
I'll second.
Can we, before we do that, can we make the amendments on number 77 of the condition of approval and 84?
Yes.
As part of your motion?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll make those changes as described in the applicant's presentation, the corrections will include that as part of the motion.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed, 6-0.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Any announcements?
Sadly, I have one, and I'll let Christian take over, but Christian will be leaving us. He, his wife got accepted to grad school in Long Beach, and so they are moving out there, which means that the commute to here is a little bit too long, so he was successfully got a job, a promotion at the city of Garden Grove, so I am excited that a young planner has moved up from the ranks, but I'm also sad to, to lose a friend and someone that has been a great employee over the past four years, and so, but I'll let him take over.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you guys all for, you know, your time every, you know, twice a month. I know you guys are volunteers, and it's a difficult job that you do, and just what a blessing it's been to, to work with the city of Yucipa and work with such a great staff. You know, the people that I'm here with here, I, I spend as much time as I do my family, and it's just, it's a good place to work. You've got a really good team that you guys work with, so, yeah, I'll miss you guys all.
We wish you all the best. You have really been an asset to the city, and you're going to kill it over there, so. Anyone else have any words they'd like to say to Christian?
Thank you, Christian. You know, I've enjoyed listening to your presentation, even when I tried to do half of it for you.
Yeah, we're going to miss you, Christian.
Yeah, no, and good luck with the new job.
Yeah.
And living in the city.
By the beach, he'll be right by the beach.
Not quite, but, yeah, no, good luck. Thank you very much. I can't believe it's been four years or so already.
Any other announcements?
We will have a planning commission meeting, and I guess it probably won't be the first one, I don't think, but, but we will have one, and we'll have kind of a steady stream of some stuff. It will be, will be pretty busy internally, because as I think everyone knows, Maddie is also expecting a child in the next kind of month or so, so I'll be down some staff, and so we'll, we'll be busy internally, so.
What, what date do you think our next meeting will be?
Um.
20?
August 20th, I think probably will be the, the next one. Everyone will know ahead of time, but that's probably the one we're, we're looking at right now.
Don't get sick, Ben.
All right, with that, meeting is adjourned.